Yes, President President Furman.
Present.
Vice President Curry.
Here, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you. Alder Bennett. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Foster.
Present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Abax. You have Quorum.
Thank you. Alder Bennett did inform me that she was would not be able to make it. I don't think we have any registrants, so I think we can skip the the IT intro and save ourselves a few moments. Our first order of business business would be approval of minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion approved minutes.
Second.
All right, great. Thank you. Any questions, comments, corrections on the minutes? Not seeing any, I'm going to assume unanimous consent unless I see somebody raise their hand and say otherwise. All right, moving right along, public comment. We have nobody registered for the generic public comment item. So we'll move on to disclosures and recusals or any members of the body that have required disclosures or recusals. Not seeing any, so we'll move into items for consideration and our first item would be seven two three nine three, the Madison Forward Fund. We have some guests today that are here to talk about and give us some background and answer questions. So I'm not sure who's presenting, but whoever is, go ahead and take it away.
Hi, I can probably get it started and George and Nancy are here as well, so feel free to chime in. Thanks so much for having us. I, am I able to share my screen? Yes. Oh, Nancy's right on the other side. Okay, good. Um, okay, so are you seeing this slide deck? Great, all right. So I'll just go through a little bit of information and then we, you know, there might be some questions or follow up at the end. Yeah, so my name's Blake Roberts-Crawl. I'm the program manager for the city's new guaranteed income program, the Madison Forward Fund. So I will definitely tell you a lot more about this program and the idea of guaranteed income. And I think really the reason that we're here is just because this is a new program and there's been a lot of questions out there. And so want to make sure that, you know, this, the council is kind of up to date and has a chance to to connect more. And I have connected with many of you. So thanks so much for reaching out and for your support so far. And I should also just mention that there is a city task force that advises for this program that have have two authors there also. So, um, the, first I'll just talk about the idea of guaranteed income. It because it's it's gaining some popularity in the US and in the world right now. And and the idea really is that it's an unrestricted and unconditional cash payment. So that means that you don't have to be working, you don't have to be doing anything sort of contingent. There's no contingent requirements there. And then it's unrestricted so that you, families or individuals can use this cash however they see fit. So that's very broadly the idea of guaranteed income. And I think a lot of places here right now, a lot of cities are starting to think about what role they might be able to play in this momentum, this movement around guaranteed income. And it really, the idea is that we know that there's still a lot of need. There is so much need out there, you know, there's in the wake of the pandemic, rising inflation in Wisconsin, just in so many places, the lack of affordable childcare is really making it hard for families to get by and are still struggling. So we know that. And guaranteed income is very promising. There's a lot of really promising data out there to show how this can be a tool to address, really help families move out of poverty. Particularly when you're trying to address sort of racial and gender inequities in our in our system. And thinking about the existing welfare system that's already there. Guaranteed income doesn't want to replace that. It's trying to supplement that system that already exists. But provide an additional resource that is very flexible, that can respond to families' needs. We know that needs change from month to month. So it's great that food stamp, we need food stamps that's here, but that only gives you money for food. You know, we need childcare subsidies, we need more childcare subsidies, but that's only for childcare. And so it's really limited in how families can budget and they don't have as much autonomy and flexibility to controlling those household needs. And then a lot of those programs are really burdensome, can be really hard just to a lot of people don't qualify. It can be very difficult to get those funds, even if you do qualify, there's a lot of barriers along the way. And many of those barriers are particularly burdensome for families of color, homeless families, disability, people with disabilities. You know, those more marginalized groups. So we know that having something like a guaranteed income can really is very promising and could be a great tool to add to that that welfare system that already exists. And there's a lot of data so far out there that shows that having unrestricted, unconditional cash can be really effective in terms of family stability and economic mobility. And, you know, be happy to point to more specific research, but the the more most well-known study in the US is from Stockton, California, which was a, you know, similar, it was a year of direct cash payments to low-income families. And there was amazed, they're still putting out results from that because they're still seeing all sorts of outcomes in terms of health and wellness, particularly like stress level, some yeah, a lot of very promising data there. And and then the the less concrete, maybe more narrative pieces of it are really compelling too. And people just saying like, look, I just had a little bit more time to be able to hang out with my kid. And that helped me feel more connected, you know, that kid feels a little bit more relaxed. And so some of those things are we're starting to see that evidence come up a little bit more. So it's very exciting. And with all that, I think with the Stockton pilot that happened and just this concept kind of becoming more talked about. The this network of mayors came together, really led by Mayor Tubbs from from Stockton and created this network called Mayors for Guaranteed Income. So it's only a few years old. Madison was one of the first cities to sign on to the network. And at first it was just an advocacy group to say, we think this is a really important concept and we think that there we can make a case for a national guaranteed income program. That is the ultimate goal. But then because from there was some funding that became available and so MGI was able to distribute that funding to many of these cities, including Madison to say, well, let's really test this, right? We think there's some promising data. We think this is a good idea in concept, but let's really test it. Not just in California, but also in in Florida and in Wisconsin and in New York and Michigan, all these places, just really be able to make the case that we to see what happens when you give people cash. So that's kind of where we are now. The MGI network has really grown. So I actually lose track of how many cities there are. I think there's about eighty that have signed on to be part of the network. And about thirty cities of those are running their own pilots. And many of them are modeled after the Stockton pilot, but each one is a little bit different. You know, kind of responding to the own needs and and circumstances in their in their own city. And I don't think any of the mayors would say that the goal is to have a permanent locally managed guaranteed income program. I don't think that's really the goal, you know, I think it really is to use this as a learning experience to aggregate a lot of this data together to collaborate and to build this broader movement around guarantee income, really try to advocate for a national program. So that's the bigger context. And Madison has been planning their pilot for for a while now. And as I said, there's a task force that has been really, really phenomenal in advising the planning and design and rollout for the program. I was brought on only a few months ago, so Nancy and George who are here on the call have done so much work for over a year now and getting things ready. And I was brought on, you know, the the planning is kind of ready and we're able to move into implementation phase. So that's that's where we are now. And many of you might have seen that we launched the program a few weeks ago. So now kind of shift gears from the bigger picture around guaranteed income and talk about our specific program here, the Madison Forward Fund. And so it's all privately funded. Mayor Rose Conway has been doing fundraising for this specifically, so there's no city tax dollars are used that are being used. And in total, it's almost a million dollars that will go directly in as cash to families. And each family will receive five hundred dollars a month for one year. So in total, that's six thousand dollars per family. And we have enough funds to select one hundred and fifty-five families from Madison to be able to participate. And it's part of a research study and I'll talk about that that program design in a minute, the research design piece. But really the purpose of this pilot is, yes, it is to be supporting families right now, to be investing in local residents right now. But it's really to be learning and to be part of this research study, this demonstration project to understand what happens when you give people cash and feel to have some really a year of data from Madison specifically so that we can contribute to this overall effort. And so we launched the application on June twenty-first. And we just closed that application period for, it's kind of intentionally a short window. But we had thirty-five hundred families apply, which is really like a crazy number. Based on other cities, we knew that it would probably be way, way more than what we had spots for. But I think it is really, really telling of what the need that's out there. And that was, I know that there's more people who didn't apply, right? That's just who did the application, but thirty-five hundred, that's a lot. So we're working with the University of Pennsylvania. They have a Center for Guaranteed Income Research. And so they are coordinating the the research part for all these cities, which is really great to have that coordinating entity. And at today, like right now, they are doing the random selection process, some data cleaning and the families get randomly selected. Most people will not be selected at all, right? Just because so many people applied. But a hundred and fifty-five will be selected to receive the cash income for one year. And then two hundred families would be selected for a control group. So they won't receive cash, but they'll still participate in the same follow-up surveys. Both groups will, they can volunteer, it's voluntary, but will be asked to fill out surveys so that we can see any change in time across a lot, a lot of different indicators. And then I should also say in terms of who this program was open to, so who was eligible to apply. It was specifically for families living in the city of Madison. The applicant needs to be eighteen years or older. And then it was for fa- low-income families. So having a child, at least one child under eighteen, it could be seventeen or under living at home and then a household annual income that's two hundred percent of the federal poverty or less. So that's sort of where we are now. We're, you know, we're in this randomization phase right now. And then in the next few weeks, we expect to be able to start notifying families whether they've been selected or not.
Um, thank you, Blake. Um, could you just, I don't know if I heard, can you just let people know what your title is, who you're with? And also you said there are other people here from the city, just so for people who who may not know who those people are. Also, just either they can introduce themselves or you can tell us who's here with you?
Yeah, so I'm Blake Blake Roberts-Crawl and I'm the program manager for the Madison Forward Fund. And I, my position is actually at UW Madison in partnership with.
Great. Thank you, George. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thanks, President Furman. So my name is George Rice and I am a business development specialist in EDD. And I guess with Nancy and Blake, we're kind of co-staffing this. I mean, Blake is kind of doing all the day-to-day and really, you know, immersed in the program being launched, but me and Nancy are kind of the city staffer counterparts supporting Blake.
Great. And Nancy, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself as well, that'd be great.
Sure. Thank you, President Furman. My name is Nancy Saez and I sit at the Community Development Division. And work with, George has actually been involved for like two years. I just came in a year ago and then Blake just came in. So, thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate that. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Thank you, Alder Furman. So we've got a couple of questions for Blake or for George or Nancy. So the when is it expected for the first money to go out to people?
Yeah, so we're hoping sometime in September. And the reason that we don't know exactly is that anyone who has other benefits, other public benefits, we want to make sure that they have access to a benefits counselor before officially enrolling in the program. So we need some time to make sure everybody has a chance to meet with that, you know, with a counselor beforehand. So that's why the the first dispersment day is a little bit fuzzy because we'll wait, we want to give people time to go through that process. But hopefully it will be sometime in September.
So you walk right into my next question. There has been a little bit of confusion or concerns in regards to the impact of these five hundred dollars in other another financial aid. Can you explain to the rest of us what does that mean?
Yeah, so there's a, there's, I often get two questions. So one is, does it affect taxes? And then how does it affect public benefits? And I think you're asking about the the public benefits one or both. Yeah, so I can talk about both. In terms of the IRS, they, this is considered a gift. And so because it's under that, you know, gift income, I can't remember what it is now, I think like fifteen thousand dollars a year, it doesn't need to be reported on a tax return. You don't need to pay taxes on it. That part is pretty clear. Then for public benefits, you know, for SNAP or WIC, for Section Eight, anything like that. You know, every program counts income in a different way. And so it's very difficult to say exactly how a particular family will be affected until we can meet the families, right? And sort of in theory. We know which programs will count this income towards eligibility calculations and which ones won't. And so that's why we want each family to sit down and say, you know, okay, what if my SNAP benefit is going to be changed by fifty dollars a month, you know, is that worth it to me? And in some cases, it might not be worth it. Or, oh, my gosh, I'm going to lose my Section Eight voucher, you know? We want every family to be have a really, really clear understanding of how this would impact them before signing on. And yeah, that is very, very important. And then each family will decide for themselves, is this the right thing for them or is it not?
Thank you. And then my last question is in regards to the criteria for like defining families. I mean, so it doesn't matter if you have one child versus five children. It doesn't matter, it's five hundred dollars. I mean, there may be occasions where you have, you know, like you talk about a lot about double-ups, you have multiple families living together. Well, that I know is random, but if by chance two families, two two payments land on the same address, that shouldn't be an issue either, correct?
Um, no, that wouldn't disqualify someone. That's right. Yeah, because, yeah, there could be situations when there are two families with the same address. So that, yeah, that would be fine. And you're right, it's for the hundred and fifty-five, every family gets five hundred dollars. It doesn't matter how many people are in the home, you know, it's not like some of the tax credits that have been given out recently where it is per child, which is also basically an unconditional cash transfer, but slightly different structure. So, yeah, you're right, it's the same part.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much, President Furman. Um, so Blake, I know I keep hearing you say that folks are going to get five hundred dollars cash. When you say that, that's cash in hand, is that correct?
It's on a debit card and it can be used as cash. So there's various ways that it can be used. It can be used as a debit card, it can be swiped, you know, it can be used at an ATM, someone could withdraw all of the funds as cash if they want to. And then it could also be transferred electronically to another bank account. So we're not physically giving out cash. I think it is a little bit of a misnomer to call it cash. But, yeah, so that's how it will go out.
Okay, so then if people sign on or get accepted and they sign the paperwork and everything, then will it basically come onto the card once a month at the same time every month? Okay, I see everyone shaking their head, so I assume that's a yes.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yes.
That's fine. So then the next thing is I had a question about that two hundred participants in a in a controlled group or something. Can you explain more about that, please?
Yeah, yeah. So this, um, I think people also are calling it a program, but I'm trying to be careful. Sometimes I slip up, but it's really not a program in that this is not designed as a community level intervention, right? The scale is just not big enough. But what it is, is it's a randomized controlled trial. So we will have two groups of families and collect the same data from both families. But and because they're randomly selected, they're sort of like statistically similar, we think they would be statistically similar. But one group receives the cash and the other group does not receive the cash. So we're trying to be able to compare if there are differences between those groups to be able to say, well, maybe it was because of this cash that they received. So those are the two different groups and people are randomly assigned into both of them.
Oh, so they're randomly assigned to the other two hundred, but you said that was voluntary, is that correct? And they will not be getting paid?
So they won't receive the five hundred dollars for the guaranteed income. Any survey that they complete, they're compensated thirty dollars, both groups on top of the five hundred. So there's compensation for their time. And, yeah, it's it's voluntary. We can't force anyone to do a survey, even the people that are receiving the five hundred dollars. It's their choice, right? If they want to participate in the research or not.
Right, but I I I'm just trying to figure out what the benefit would be. If you don't get picked to get the five hundred dollars cash, what's the benefit of being in a in a con- controlled group? So you can hear my trials and tribulations that I'm going through, you know what I'm saying? Is that what you're trying to compare? So someone got the five hundred dollars, how much better off they're doing? Someone still doing the same, staying poor, you want to report on how they're doing? Is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
And then, but now I'm clear that they get compensated for any surveys that they fill out during this year period or beyond. Okay, all right. Um, yeah, I think that was all my questions at this point, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Thanks. I have three questions, but one was a two-parter. So just real quick, do you have a rough sense of what the household, what the household size was in the in the thirty-five hundred? Kind of how that breaks down?
I don't know yet. I don't have access to any of the data, but we hopefully eventually will.
Okay. Second, for the thirty or a hundred folks who have applied, will we actually have access to their contact information at some point? So could we connect some of them with benefit counselors if we do have time? Here's people that are writing in and we have a way to reach them. Can we go out and say, well, you know, we're sorry, we weren't able to connect you with this, but can we connect them with services, say, you know, maybe you're eligible for SNAP? Are you aware of that? Maybe you're eligible for the, I don't know what the program is, the 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 thing that people used to go all the while about the Obama phone. You know, there's a whole bunch of services that a lot of people may not be have access, may be eligible for but aren't taking advantage of. And if we've got contact information, it'd be great to try and reach out to some of those folks.
Absolutely. Blake, can I take this one?
Yeah, yeah.
So so one of the things I will be working on, Alder Paulson, and I will be working with one of the deputy mayors, will be on putting together a good community current, community list of resources. Because we know, and one of the things the mayor has really wanted to do and and we were all behind her and a hundred percent believe that we should get in touch with everyone that applied, that lives in the city of Madison. That's the least we can do for the time that they spent in filling out the survey. And so one of the things I will be working on is updating the community resource webpage that we currently have in the city in the city website, but also getting getting in touch with people and putting something together so we can give people resources if they need them that are that are up to date in the city of Madison. So, yeah, we'll we'll be providing something for for other families that don't get chosen for anything. But just for all the families and for it to be on the on the city website also to to live there.
Okay, great, thank you. And then this this last one, we could take offline, you can just send a follow-up. I'm just curious if there are actual any differences in sort of the Madison program compared to other programs in the neighbor, in the network, besides just the fact that it's we're doing it in Madison. One that I'm really interested in hearing about, and this is just intellectual curiosity, any programs that are going for longer than one year? For a one-year cash transfer, I don't think you would move. For a five-year cash transfer, maybe you would choose a new new housing site. So I'm just curious like what what folks are thinking about that. And again, we don't need to erase CCEC's time, we can take this offline later, but thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole.
So Blake, what other kind of support will you be providing? So, um, Blake, what other kind of support will would you be providing to the families selected? How does that, what does that look like?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, um, pretty intentionally, not a lot that isn't directly related to receiving these funds. Because we're trying to be really careful that I'm not adding any other services or intervention that might distort the research. And also trying to balance the reality that like these are real people and I'm a real person and I will be interacting with them. So I need to be able to some, like, the list of resources will be essential, right? So at least be able to point people in your direction, but in a, but other than that, it's pretty limited. And so my role after this with families is really just um like troubleshooting. So do they lose their card? Do they have questions? Are they having trouble using their card or something like that to be that point of contact? Um, but other than, there's a separate research fellow that handles the the re- the surveys. Um, but yeah, other, it's a very low-touch, I mean, a lot of money, but low-touch interaction.
Yes, and and thank you, thank you for your your question, Alder Figaro Cole. One of the things that we were able to do when we were doing a soft launch, um, because we were trying to get ahead of the um and trying to be very targeted in terms of the um agencies that we got um in touch with and the outreach that we did. And one of the things that um we made sure to talk about, especially me, was um to also talk with other providers in the community about the fact that if there was, you know, hopefully a family that was chosen, that's part of one of the programs in the community of the providers that we met with, um, making sure that um we, they know that if there is something happening with the family that Blake cannot deal with or she shouldn't be dealing with due to the due to her explanation, that we would go back to that provider and just sort of, you know, do a a warm handoff or just talk to the provider to make sure that the family does have some resources. So Blake is very specific about the research, but then um we will be working with community providers to provide that. Um, um, to 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 prevent people from from falling into the cracks and just provide support for families.
Thank you, ladies.
Uh, thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin.
This will be my last time. Um, I I so I just got a question. If what happens if somebody moves out of the state, the city, after a certain period of time? Are they disqualified and or can you get another, can you pick another family to finish out the year period?
Yeah, so, um, if someone, any life change that happens during the course of the year payments, nothing would disqualify someone from being able to still receive receive these payments. Um, because it's really, I mean, part of the study is to see what changes there are in a family's life over a year. And maybe that allows them to move to a new house or um get a new job or, you know, some, who knows, right? All all these things. So part of it is that, yeah, we do want to actually capture that and not disqualify people. Um, that's for people that aren't, have started the program and started receiving funds. Um, if uh, this is not exactly what you're asking, but maybe just good to know in terms of, you know, if other people are asking out there. Um, when we start the notification process, we we do have to be really clear on, we need people to respond to us, to acknowledge that they're gonna be part of the program, and we give them a very specific amount of time. Um, and if we can't reach someone or if someone chooses not to participate, um, then then at that point, we can replace them um from that that pool of applicants again. Um, uh, but but for your question, you know, if there's some other change, then no, they could still still receive.
Okay, thank you. And I think maybe this is for Nancy. Um, I know I just heard you say that you're gonna put the information on the city's website. Um, is there anywhere else that can be put? I mean, honestly, the city of Madison website is not easy to navigate. Folks have tons of problems with that. So how else are we gonna get the word out there? Or, you know, make the resources knowledgeable to people besides the city of Madison website? Cause that is not going to do it for folks.
Um, Alder Conklin, I will agree with you as a staff person. Um, yes, our website, even in C D D, is um, it's a work in progress. So, um, yes, I hear you. I think for now, what we're gonna do, because it is a s- a small um somewhat of a small project, big project, with the thirty-five thousand people that we need to answer to. I think what we can do is if we if we update that that specific website, it's a community resource page that the city has. Um, so I've never worked with that one, so the mayor asked me to work and put updated information in that, so I will do that. Um, but I think one of the ways that we can do that for you all in the call is maybe let you know or send you an email to let you know that things are updated. It's kind of hard for me and I don't wanna create something that um that's gonna have to be updated constantly. Because I think there are many agencies that already have something like that or already have their own resources. So I don't wanna duplicate something. I just just for this pilot, I am gonna just put up, you know, recent resources. But that is something, Alder Conklin, that we do have to take into consideration in terms of, um, you know, uh, putting someone in the city to be responsible for updating um things like that. I'm just putting it out there to all the Alders because we need a lot of help with our webpage. Um, but just putting it out there, um, it is a work in progress. And um, and and we can share with you whatever we come up with as Alders. You can all put them in your updates uh or in your blogs. Um, I I'm a little more hesitant, Alder Conklin, to like, let's say, make that the be-all and end-all of resource pages, because we just, you know, as 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 much as I'm connected, I don't know all the resources. But I mean, that could be a work in progress that maybe can come out of this.
Okay, thank you, yes. And I highly suggest that you send it to all the Alders, so we can post that on our blogs and things like that. That would be helpful. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, thank you, uh, Blake, uh, George and Nancy for coming. I very much appreciate it. Um, uh, this presentation will be posted to legislative item and Alders will get a copy of this video who weren't able to attend. Um, so they can they can watch it. So, um, thank you so much. Uh, and uh, we wish you guys the best of luck of getting the research and 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 figuring out where where the program goes from there. So, thanks much. All right, um, we're gonna move on to our next item on our agenda. Um, we have a a legislative item, um, seven zero two four six, which is an update item for the uh on three-on-one. And we've got Director, uh, Director Edgerton with uh with us uh to give us an update. Sarah, Sarah, go ahead.
Yep, thank you. Hi, good afternoon. Um, I was focused on sharing and not speaking, so I apologize. So, you know, to Alder Conklin's point, this is a lovely segue into this presentation, which is, hey, it would be really useful if the city had one way to access city services and not have to figure out how to navigate through, um, to figure out how to get the city services that they need. That they have either a phone number, they can go on Facebook, they can send in a text. There are many different ways that we would think about how we would get, um, people access to the city services going through basically one one portal to get that information. So today I'm here to present, and this is going to be, um, the first of several presentations that will be, um, uh, given to the C C E C over uh the next probably twelve months on um Madison three-one-one and where we are. Um, as you may recall, um, last year, the common council passed during um budget um proceedings, the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two capital improvement plan amendment to fund a consultant, um, but really a project manager, um, to come and facilitate the discussion on how to move forward with a three-one-one. And to really move the the, um, process of what a three-one-one roadmap would look like for the city of Madison. So the scope of the project for this this um project manager, um, would in include facilitating discussions, and these discussions would be with um common council, city residents, with uh all of our city agencies that have services, so that would be all city agencies. Um, working with the mayor's office, working with the mayor's management team, working with um our community partners, those who are impacted by city services and those who would uh see uh the need or the use of a three-one-one. So they'll be facilitating these discussions, and these discussions are gonna include, you know, what what would benefit from these streamlined services? So would it be uh that we wouldn't do all um services as part of a three-one-one? And we would really s- focus in on uh those services that are part of what we have as part of reported problem? Or would we do it in a phased approach? These are the discussions that this project manager and this uh consultant will have. They're also gonna analyze and assess what is the impact of our existing structure and will it be able to support a three-one-one? They're gonna look at the city's website, and they're gonna talk about how we need to get that better streamlined. And what does that look like again with the three-one-one and what would those services be? Um, and then they're gonna look at the the current state of readiness. And when there's, when we, when we speak about this, this is really about what is the both the technology infrastructure for this? And then what is uh our our processes within city agencies and their current state of readiness for a three-one-one implementation? Are all agencies using the software that they need to be using so that we can move forward with a three-one-one? Um, and then just really being part of this organi- organizing, facilitating again, the discussions that we're gonna need to have, um, that right now, we don't have the staff on hand that can do this. So this is why we're gonna be bringing in this consultant. And then the last piece of this is then looking at the um roadmap that we already have in place that we had um done back in twenty nineteen, and then taking those findings and building on it and getting those recommendations. So we did a R F P already to hire this consultant, and I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the timeline of the evaluation of the R F P. We did it actually pretty quickly. Um, we started in January, had the R F P out, they had about a month to respond. And we went through and did this in a um quick process uh for city government. So uh this was done very quickly, and we are now uh going to be signing the contract and moving forward probably at the end of July on all of the um project. And the panel was a wide uh section of city staff. We wanted to make sure that we were in hearing voices from our D P C E D agencies, public works agencies, administrative agencies, common council, um, transportation, and um making sure that with these voices, there were voices of staff that really are supporting these services. So Kyle Buno is a huge, um, uh, uh, partner for working with a city I T on um the reporter problem system and trying to consistently get more and more of their processes online and uh, you know, trying to create uh better streamlined uh resources for residents. Alder Foster, who's been a big um supporter of three-one-one. Kathy Cryan, who um also is another uh s- heavy user of our city works system, which is another system that has a work order component to it, and then is also the interim city engineer and really is kind of knows the city inside and out. Kara Kradowitz, who is in human resources and who is our performance excellence, um, manager. So she oversees processes and um uh improving uh different uh solutions and looking at how can we do this better, how can we be more agile and how we're doing that? And then Mick Rouge, who is our customer services manager, who handles all of the uh his staff, handles all of the calls and uh all of the different customer service um needs of Madison Metro, and then myself. The scoring criteria, the the really big piece and what weighted the most for us was the project manager and the um SMEs, the subject matter experts qualifications and capabilities to meet the needs of what we needed for this. Um, it was at thirty percent, it was a really big deal for us, and there was a lot of uh discussion and kind of back and forth with um the vendor that we selected. Um, we selected Public Consulting Group, P C G. They have been doing this for thirty-five years, and they do kind of this mixture of consulting, um, bringing in different experts so that they don't have them always on staff. And so for this one, they have um a expert from the city of Atlanta who oversaw their three-one-one technology implementation, and he worked for the city of Atlanta from twenty twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-one. And then from the city of Pittsburgh, we actually have their three-one-one manager right now, um, who helped to implement theirs and is still working at the city of Pittsburgh and will be doing this project part-time. Um, and then their project manager that we will be working with, Mark English, he helped to uh implement the Wisconsin e-health program. And then the contract tracing and call center management, both New York or with New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania and Wisconsin. And that's still going on, and he oversaw that implementation. And this is just to name a few of the different projects that Mark has worked on. So the key deliverables that we'll be asking um P C G to uh present, and then he will be presenting these to uh the C C E C, is um their proposed list of city services that they believe should be managed through a three-one-one. And again, that will be part of those conversations that they'll be facilitating and having with, um, you know, all of the different uh key partners that need to be, um, uh, not only, not only having a discussion with them, but really understanding, do their services lend it, lend themselves to a three-one-one? So really listening to what the customer is is telling them. Uh, then they're also gonna outline a governance model and then this organizational structure of a three-one-one. So that means having discussions with the C C E C about, is this twenty-four-seven? Is this Monday, you know, through Sunday, or is this Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty? Is it a virtual, um, three-one-one? Do they have an office? What does this look like? Having those those discussions, also talking to city staff about this and talking to the front-end um desk staff that are already handling many of these calls and are already working with residents to help them navigate the city. Um, then they're also gonna look at our inform- technology infrastructure and make recommendations on if there are other pieces of software that we need to bring in, if there are other modules of software that we already have. Um, they'll be helping to have those conversations with I T. And do they see if there are agencies that they feel need to start using a piece of technology, helping to identify that as well? And then they're gonna help us with a change management template, you know, change management is a really big deal um for a three-one-one, and we need to start it now. And we need to be constantly thinking about it and making sure that as we're moving forward, that we're checking in to make sure that we have change management in place for the different pieces of this and the different phases of it. And then they're gonna do communications on on the implementation, and that will be things as the, you know, such as presenting to the C C E C. They're gonna be sending out regular updates that we can provide to the common council. They'll be uh presenting to the mayor's management team, to agencies, and uh, you know, making sure that they're communicating out where they are, what they're gonna be working on, what's next, and what do they need from us. And then as I have been emphasizing pretty uh strongly, the facilitating these discussions on the three-one-one uh business model. And then one of the other big pieces that we'd like to see from them is is creating a multi-year budget for us and forecasting out this phased implementation uh timeline for a three-one-one. Cause this isn't all gonna happen in one year. This is gonna be, if we do move forward with this, this would be a multi-year project. And this is all, I just wanna emphasize this, cause I think this is really important. This is still just an if. There is a lot here, a three-one-one could be very expensive, and this is, these are decisions that are gonna have to be made by the common council, by the mayor's office and by the mayor. So this is the PCG timeline. I do want to note that these start times and dates are going to reflect new, will reflect that new award date. So it'll be at the end of July, so everything will shift over. But you can see that it's pretty aggressive and that there's a lot of things that are sort of stacked upon each other and that they're continuous. So for example, number six, the communications and the three one one system implementation, that's throughout the whole time because that's so important that we make sure that they are communicating throughout the project of where they are and how they're progressing. And then the list of city services is one of the really big lists that they're going to have. That's going to be the seventy five day discussion that they'll be having. And then looking at the appropriate facility model, I think that's going to be another big one for them as well. Along with the change management, which is, is across it. So this is really just kind of a snapshot, that timeline might change. It's going to be very flexible and fluid as we move through, but this is the intent of what they're going to do with their work. And that is really about it. The next update that we are planning for will be in September to the CCEC.
Thank you, Sarah. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Sarah. So I mean, these, these three one ones still kind of in a, we haven't really, the new Alders haven't really heard much about it. So we haven't really been like thoroughly focused on the, at least I haven't been focused on this particular project. But one thing that I'm curious to know is, do you know how, how the Salvation Army, who is it? There's another organization that managed to say a list of services were done correctly? What's the name?
So there is the United Way.
Okay, the United Way. So do you know how do they manage like to keep the list up to date? Because there's so many, there's been so many people, like I know people in the community that have managed to create apps and, and lists to keep, to of services. But before it was the books and it was very hard to, to keep the copies updated. But even the apps is, is hard to keep them updated. So how does that work?
So I don't know how, I don't know how United Way is actually doing those, updating their information. You know, for the, and this will be, this will be part of that implementation discussion. And this is where I feel like the, the city of Pittsburgh's service manager is going to come in and be very useful. We'll be creating a knowledge base and that knowledge base will be where all the services will be. And that will be the, in my mind, and I, I could be wrong, but how I would see this working, the responsibility of the agency. So each service, because each service, they are the subject matter experts. But then they will have to let the three one one staff know that this is what information has been updated. And so it's going to have to be a very coordinated conversation about how this is going to continuously get updated. It's, it's not, you know, much different than, you know, when we're doing work in IT and our help desk is answering phone calls and they're going to our knowledge base. It's up to our technicians to, you know, continuously update any changes that are made to a service so that when the help desk is going to look at the knowledge base, they're able to do that. And the other intent is, is that, excuse me, I think for some residents, you know, they're interested in just going out and finding it themselves because they're doing their, their city business at eleven o'clock at night. And so being able to go to that knowledge base themselves and find the information will also be important so that those articles are out there for residents to be able to find stuff. Does that answer your question?
It does, but it is, it is, I think that's going to be that like the hardest part of the whole system. And it's the one thing that is going to make the system either successful or collapse. I mean, spending all this money for and, and not, not focusing on how to keep this and putting them on the providers that, you know, many of these organizations, like earlier, Alder Paulson is talking about all the services that we have in the community. We do have a lot of services in the community that are, are not sustainable, that we cannot actually provide funding for, and they just fall off the, fall off the, of the map. So they're not going to come back to us and say, well, I'm not providing the service anymore. And working at the, while, while volunteering at the B, that was one of those things where you knew, you know, we'll go to this resource and you know, you have to constantly be doing soft transfers, like verifying if that still, like so many times that person wasn't there anymore and you have to keep on going down the list and it's like, oh my God. So to me, I get it that it is an important thing, but that, that is for me critical to know that, that, that the list is going to be vetted every so often, that we're going to start pulling people out, putting them back in. Like, I don't know, that's my, the only concern.
And, and one of the things I should clarify and I apologize is that when we did the first study, we talked to United Way. And it was made very clear that United Way would stay in there, in their world and in their lane, doing what they do with two on one. And that we would really just cover city of Madison services. So I, that I should clarify. So anything that's in the United Way two on one line, what we will do is we will refer them over to two on one.
So this is just exclusively to kind of help to navigate the city, the city services.
You got it. Exactly. Yeah.
Perfect. I mean, like yesterday, literally I was looking for a phone number that I just could call the city. I'm just waiting for a prompt. That doesn't exist. Got it. So we are trying to replace that.
You got it. Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you and thanks, Sarah, for all the good info. Two questions. The first one is a reflection of the fact I'm not very astute about these types of things. Can you describe change management?
Sure. So, you know, and it's, it's funny, I was, I like to use IT because it's, it's the world I know. And in IT, we have, we struggle with change, which is ironic because we push out a lot of change. And so the concept of change management is basically just creating foreshadowing, letting people know what's going to be happening next, what to expect, what is the impact going to be? And then also bringing them in as part of the conversation so that they have ownership in it. So not assuming that we know best, but in fact, bringing in the subject matter experts to help us make these decisions. So that's where those facilitate, facilitated conversations will come in, where we're bringing in the subject matter experts to help us make the decisions that are going to impact all. And so that's, that's how I best define change management. I'm sure that there are many other ways to define it, but in, in this case, this is what we're looking for.
Well, that one seems totally appropriate and I, I, I hope that that works out. A second question, I, I may be jumping the gun because the consultant still hasn't done their work. But I, I keep thinking budget, budget, budget. And I, I, it, it seems the consultant will be doing some scoping work associated with budget. But I, I also recognize that each agency will be in different positions coming into this and have different needs. Will there be some recommendations, do you think about funding source, not funding sources, but how the, the budgetary implications, both for agencies and for, I guess I'll call it the city at large. And, and then how, you know, will, will, will that be taken into account? That, you know, as, as budgets react to the, the forthcoming system? And people have to be trained, capabilities have to come in. I mean, it seems like agency budgets, changes could vary wildly based on their current situation. Will the consultant be able to advise on some of that, do you think?
I think that that will be part of what they're looking at is, you know, if, if we were to, for example, take staffing and consolidate staffing, what would that impact be? So that, yeah. I mean, they're also going to have to look at if we have a three one one. I mean, to be, to be very honest, that would mean that IT would need more staff because we cannot support this on top of everything else that we already have. So what would that look like for IT? And so, you know, they're going to, they're going to have to look at, and when, when we were talking to them and, and I was having kind of the initial, first conversation with them, I reminded them that it's important for them to also think about models that perhaps are not the current models of today that we see with three one ones in other cities. But you know, are there models where it's not, you know, it's, it's not the whole kit and caboodle for a three one one, but that there are pieces of the three one one that we bring in that would be the best impact and the best bang for our buck. Looking at the fact that we do have a budget that is tight. And so how do we try to, to, if we can't get a hundred percent, what percentage can we get with the budget that, that they can present for us?
Sounds like a big task. Thank you.
I think so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson, go ahead. Alder, you're muted.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions about sort of scoping and what we might be thinking about besides sort of the, the three one one front, front end that, that residents might be experiencing. I'm interested in, in how much of maybe some internal city communications and systems and ticket tracking, are we, are we thinking about trying to include in here? Right now, like a lot of what I do, and I'm still new at this. And, and you know, I take emails that I get from constituents and then I look at it and I say, I'm going to email the department head for this area and they're going to take time out of their day to help me. And I'm really hoping that we could get to a point where if I have translated into something, I can translate it into a, a ticket that can get dispatched and, and managed by the staff that has the opportunity to, to look at this and expertise and not necessarily the department head and, and be able to work a little bit on that. And so I'm just curious, I don't know what we've got for that citywide. I assume some of the departments have their own internal systems and, and how much of this will be able to replicate and make advantage or, or, and not, some of the, the frontline folks, which right now doesn't include Alders to, to take a look at that. And then sort of the, the follow-up question to that is if, are there any cost savings potentials from maybe be able to consolidate backends across all of these things? Either flat out from, we've got fewer systems that are cheaper to manage over time or, you know, harder to quantify, but definitely real efficiency gains from, from being able to do this.
Those are two really good questions. So the, the first one, I'm going to kind of combine them together. So we have several enterprise systems already. We have a Sella, which does licensing, permitting, does some work order, especially with building inspection, they use it for their, their work order system. And then the public works, the agencies use city work. So traffic engineering, engineering storm sewer, storm water, parking utility and water utility. And I feel like I'm missing one, but those are the key ones that use city works. And the intent is, and this is, you know, I think the, 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 the goal of this is, is that no matter what system we use, and I think that the, that we would be putting a three one one on top of these systems and then they're going to have to talk to the system back and forth. And the intention is, is when that ticket goes in, that a resident or an alder is able to then track it and be able to see where it is in the process as it's moving forward. And you know, going the back and forth communications. If something isn't moving, you'll be able to look in the ticket and figure out where it is. Did it get, did it get it stuck in IT and it's not moving forward? And you know, sending in a message saying what's going on with this? And then you would get a response and then it would get moving again, hopefully. But again, that's part of what this consultant is going to have to look at and make recommendations on. We have really good infrastructure already in place and most of our agencies are using the systems that we support. So we feel the city works is, is enterprise. We feel that a Sella is, is pretty enterprise wide. And then we also are using Tyler, which is our financial system. We have some work order as, as part of that as well, and we can tie into that as well. So the, but we have to look at our, our agencies using the right system for what they need and do they need to put more in? So is it that they don't have everything in and they need to get more in? So for example, Streets Department has really heavily been starting to use a Sella in the last year, year and a half. The large item collection is one of their examples of them having that. And so that you can, you know, residents go, they can put in that they want to have their mattress picked up. And then there is a report that is set up. The resident is told when to put the mattress out. And so now we have huge gas savings or fuel diesel savings because trucks are not just driving around neighborhoods. They're actually going to where they need to pick it up. And so we're seeing cost savings that way. So I think that we're going to see more of that moving forward. I don't think that we're going to see as much with the software and technology pieces because we've been working pretty aggressively on that to try to get agencies into these systems so that we can move forward with some kind of ticketing system. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to getting the consultants on board. I'll have lots of questions and ideas for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Fossler, go ahead.
Thanks, Sarah. Sarah, just one, I guess, question, if you could help, as you've heard tonight, there's, you know, newer folks involved here. Could you just do a little bit of sort of even higher level timeline, including just like a little bit of what has come already? Quick, you know, real quick recap kind of years wise. And then you showed the time, the tentative timeline for this consultant. I think that was based on a June fifteenth start, so obviously that whole thing slides back a couple of months. And then the part around budget, you know, recommendations is really falling after our budget cycle. So could you just also preview a little bit about even the sort of best case scenario? What are the, what's, do you see as kind of potential for actually having sort of the beginnings of a three one one system up? Just so that folks have a, a sort of basis for what we're talking about and, and don't expect to see anything big real soon.
Sure. Happy to do that. So we actually started these conversations back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And these were with then Alder Mark Clear and Alder Samba Valdez. So they came to me and asked, and this is when I was web manager for IT and said, you know, we're really interested in a three one one system. And you know, what do we need to do? And I said, well, I think we need to do a feasibility report. We need to really look at, does, is the city ready to have it? Does it need to be the city and the county? Because there had been conversations in the past that we couldn't do a three one one without the county. And so they had, we brought in ICMA, which is consultant that has done many, many three one one feasibility studies over the years. They talked to quite a few of our agencies and all of the main agencies that support the reported problem system. And the findings that, that they came back with was that the city really is ready for a three one one system and was ready to move forward. So they finished their report in twenty, the end of twenty nineteen, beginning of twenty twenty. And then the pandemic hit and we sat there for two years or a year, year and a half. And then I started presenting back out saying, look, we have this report. We need to start doing these things. We need to have these facilitated discussions. We need to be thinking about what would it take if we are going to move forward with a three one one? Here are the findings. And then we talked and here we are with now this RFP that, with the PCG consultant. So we have those pieces in place. We've been thinking about this since twenty eighteen, seventeen, twenty eighteen. I think to really think about implementing, if we were to move forward with this, it would be closer to twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. I think that's how long it's going to take to really get this moving. It might be in a phased approach. Again, we'll have to see what the consultant comes back with. It might be sooner and they, they say, oh no, it can be twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. But it again comes down to budget and it comes down to, can we really support it if, if there's just not the money there to do this? And you know, are there other alternatives? And, you know, are there other alternatives that we can look at doing?
Thanks, Sarah. That's helpful. And I'll just say I um I'll continue to be involved with it as well. And and certainly want to talk with the consultants about what we can have in terms of information recommendations to inform the the twenty three budget and the twenty three SIP. Uh, because as Sarah just said, getting getting funding secured and understanding how that's going to fit within our city budget, I think will be really critical. Um, but I when when this amendment was in front of the council, I think it was unanimously uh supported, if I'm remembering, but I I know there's always been strong support from Alders. We know exactly why this is so important. Uh, but because it's such a a a long term project, I just want to make sure that we're all understanding that history and the the sort of forward trajectory um when we're having these budget conversations. Because it is one that's going to require that sort of longer term commitment, planning and and budgets to go along with it. So thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Are there any other questions? Sarah, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I really appreciate that update and looking forward to our update in September.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda that we'll move on to is item number four, seven legislative file seven two four oh four, council meeting length. Put this item on the agenda so we can start some discussions. Been getting a a lot of feedback and I have some ideas on um continuing um what seems to be for Alders that have been around the discussion that's been having happening forever, which is how do we make our meetings shorter? And recently, there have been some interesting ideas presented. Um, I know um Alder Figaro Cole has some ideas, which I have not heard, but I but it's my understanding she has some ideas. I know Alder Foster has some ideas. I have some ideas. Um, so really wanted to open up the floor to, you know, people um talking about those ideas, trying to refine those ideas and see if those are things that we can try. Um, uh, so our our meetings are not going uh eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning. Um, so um I don't know if either of those Alders that I just called out want to start the conversation. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I'll throw out uh one idea that I'd love uh feedback on, which is um I've I've been, I mean, it hasn't been a super long yet, but I'm really liking C C E C not being um right before the council meeting. So I think that's been working really well. Um, I think it also opens up some possibilities with our council meeting nights. Um, so I know when the T F O X implementation group um was working through recommendations from the the T F O X report. Um, this que- this question was wrestled with a bit when we when we proposed um some changes to order of business. And one of the things that we asked back then was potentially changing the start date to the meeting. Uh, I think there were a lot of folks that had some concerns about that and um, you know, I think be before sort of making any of those kind of changes, there was interest to get broader uh public feedback on it. So there really hasn't been a lot of conversation around that. But my idea was uh instead of changing the start time of the actual council meeting, um, the potential of sort of reinvigorating um what I think happened in the past before I was on council, which was um having some informational sessions that um don't require um a quorum of Alders to be present, um, but they are sort of, you know, noticed and published meetings. And my thought was to also consider doing uh honoring resolutions um during that uh during that kind of uh informational session, kind of pre meeting meeting that could start at five o'clock or five thirty or something like that. Where um it would be called to order, there was, you know, we would do the do those things, but it wouldn't require a full quorum of the council. Um, obviously, any any Alders who are um kind of, you know, reading the resolutions or directly involved, then it would be there. People receiving it would be there. Um, it would be all televised, you know, streamed. People could participate virtually. Um, but with a goal of of really doing what, you know, I think is usually at least thirty minutes. Um, often an hour, hour and a half, or sometimes even more, um, moving that up. Um, so that then our regular meetings would actually start with uh the consent agenda and then move pretty swiftly into public comment, which I think would also be a lot more predictable for folks that do want to show up and and give comment on an item. They won't feel like outside six thirty and here I am at eight o'clock still listening to somebody's retirement um comments. So that that's the gist of it, and I would love people's feedback on um considering doing that.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Figaro Cole.
And I know I'd like to expand on the honorary solutions. I think that having um um often we have organizations of people that represent organizations that most of us don't really know who they are. Having a place like a press release or something online that we can actually be direct people to the services they provide is even more significant than just recognizing that person. Um, I think I I like the idea to move them earlier and then kind of highlight them somewhere else for people to always be able to go back and and get more information about about that, about those ten minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes that we spend um um discussing them. And then the other, um, I'm Karen and I have had some ideas flying about that, but definitely not moving them out of the meeting, but also elevating them somehow. And then um the other, the other thing, I mean, that that I really have have um come to appreciate is just continuously continuously working on the building of the of the agenda. If we already know that there's two hot topics coming, making, you know, making whatever is in our power to to space those things out. And I think I think um we have seen some of that happening, and I know sometimes there's surprises out there that we're not expecting or or the timing is not right, but just um just getting into the continue into the click of timing, timing the agenda. Um, so didn't realize what's going to be put on the spot today. I shouldn't have known that, but so I didn't come to bed with my, I don't have my mental list written down. Um, so I'm looking forward to hear from you guys what what about one more thing. So at the beginning of the year in February, we actually made some changes to the structure of the of the process of the council. Something that I'm that I am I'm strong supporter of making the change, but also validating it. So I'm still working on on, you know, waiting to see the the first six months, how did that work out? I mean, is that helping? Is that not helping? So whatever changes we make, but making sure that the process includes validating the validating those changes. So we can say, yeah, that makes sense or not, didn't make sense. Let's go back to whatever, you know, whatever things were were before. So that's all I got at this moment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, this may not be super popular, um, but I'll propose it anyway. Uh, you know, we have a a rule that says that speakers get um three minutes. Uh, and that's a rule that the council has has agreed to, and it may even be in the ordinance, but let's just for the moment pretend it's just a rule. And but it's routinely sort of uh worked around by an alder asking a question, saying, could you finish your thought? Um, and if you look at Robert's rules of saying that, you know, under Roberts, there's a few basic axioms of um the the majority gets its way, the minority isn't allowed to uh be overridden or or uh be one rough shot over without being an opportunity we heard. Uh, I think one of the core principles of that is that um when you're asking the indulgence of the body, uh, you know, the body has the opportunity to 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 weigh in on that. Um, and this, the the fact that an alder can just say, well, please go ahead and continue that, uh, and, uh, you know, it's sort of uh running over the the rules that the body had agreed to put into place. And so I guess I'd like us to maybe at least say that, you know, at least get us to sort of acknowledge, hey, when you're asking people to just continue your thought, um, you know, that's, you know, that is asking an indulgence of your of of the rest of us, uh, if not flat out making an actual policy we put on 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 paper somewhere that uh asking asking the question, which is purely to to give the speaker more opportunity to speak uh is out of order and requires um um the consent of the body to to be able to do that. So I will leave that there. I don't know what we were actually trying to do tonight, but my idea is to get people to stop asking questions that are purely to get people to over the three minute rule, even a lot of times I'm totally okay with doing that.
Alder, I mean, I I have some thoughts up my hand, um, but I did, I do want to respond to that a little bit. I would say that if we did have a vote, I would assume ninety nine percent of the time the council would would allow it. And so um we 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 it can be challenged. Um, right now it can be challenged. An alder could say, you know, uh, you know, please, let's have a vote on it. Um, I think the the normal tradition of the body is to let that go. Um, but I but I do think it's it's worth thinking about that as we look at format changes on can we can we tweak that? Um, can we be more respectful of council time? I think that's what this sort of this really comes down to is for me is recognizing that that once the meeting starts at six thirty. Um, that time is incredibly valuable to the 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 twenty Alders that are there, the mayor, city staff and the residents that are there. And anything we can do to maximize the value of that and not spend time on things that um uh may be inappropriate, or we could shift to something else, I think is a good idea. Um, I I enjoy and appreciate the honoring resolutions and wanted to um very much um uh uh point out my support for the idea of moving them away from uh the six the six thirty um time and moving them to before the meeting. Um, I'm a little bit worried about um putting that as part of the informational sessions because we could run into a situation where we have a long update and honoring resolutions and all of a sudden that pre meeting is you know, two hours and are trying to figure out what do we do about starting council meeting, et cetera. Um, but I do think as Alder Foster pointed out, um, um, uh, you know, it's it's very unpredictable for the public right now on when public comment is going to start. And for most recently, we are spending anywhere from a half hour to an hour plus on honoring resolutions, um, sometimes even more. Um, again, I I like the honoring resolutions, but don't don't like what it does to our council meetings that end up being incredibly long. Um, I think it's hard, in my opinion, to judge whether or not we've been successful with moving the public comment to the beginning. Um, because we're still struggling with not having a predictable time for folks. Um, and so, you know, I I'm I'm a big fan of the idea of moving those honoring resolutions to a different time, something like five, five thirty, not requiring the full a full uh council quorum, maybe maybe something like three people, like the mayor or um uh council president and vice president being there, so a quorum of two. Encouraging Alders to show up if they can, um, you know, certainly show up if they have something that 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 they they definitely want to be there for. Have it recorded, um, have have the that honor for for whoever we're honoring. Have give people the ability to speak then and then really start our business at six thirty with the consent agenda and public comment on the rest of the agenda. Um, so I'm a big fan of trying that. I also just want to say, you know, that we we should continue to iterate. Um, we should recognize obviously that our changes have impacts on the community. Um, and so we shouldn't just be very quick to make changes. Um, but we should also recognize that we might make a change that might not work and therefore we should be willing to to change it again. Uh, but we shouldn't be afraid of that. Um, you know, we we should have these discussions and and try to try to move forward with some stuff. So just wanted to kind of throw out some of my thoughts there, and I see Alder Figaro Cole has her hand up, so I'll move on to her. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. I mean, this one is um um, Alder Paulson thinks this is the favorite one, just I feel I'm going to duck this one for you. Um, the ten minutes that we get um to speak on council, like honestly, that I I from the beginning, I have been extremely uncomfortable with that. I mean, we limit the public to only three minutes, um, 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 so um speaking time, but then we get ten minutes plus ten more minutes later. I mean, like, like, I I don't know, like, I try to um when I'm prepared to do something, I try to write it down. I try to make sure that I I I have tried to stay on the three minutes myself. And often it can happen. Often I go by to the four minutes or the five minutes, but I don't think once I have used my whole ten minutes to 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 make a point. I mean, like, I I don't know why ten minutes is the mark, and I don't know how much work would that be or how um many people will be against changing it, but I honestly think that we should reduce those ten minutes. Um, and again, I don't have any data to also suggest how much time those ten minutes take, you know, from the council meeting, but uh I would like to better understand that.
So one thing I I will note about that Alder Figaro Cole that that I actually had a discussion about today. Um, we are going to try to figure out how to get some sort of clock in the room. Um, so people can understand the time, um, so both, you know, the three minutes for the public, but as well as Alders. Um, I would say the same thing I said to Alder Paulson about giving people more time. Um, you know, from from experience, I think it's it's very unlikely if we made it three minutes or five minutes um that Alders would give their colleagues more time. They would hope that that respect was given to them and therefore they'd be giving that to their colleagues. So um I think those those limits are sort of written in pencil and Alders are always going to give Alders, you know, more time. Um, but I think, you know, at least displaying how much time, I think sometimes people don't realize how much time they're taking up, frankly. And so having having a clock that's much more visible, letting, um, you know, letting me know that I've talked for eleven minutes about somebody retiring is probably would be helpful and I I'd wrap it up. Um, Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, President Furman. And I guess my question is, um, and you can probably answer this, President, is what is a typical time that we would see fit to be ending council meetings? Or what has been the history of ending council meetings?
I don't I don't think I have any da- uh data. I don't know, Karen, if we have any data on end times you have, has that been done recently where you've looked at what what?
Yes, I do have some. Let me let me go find that.
So so I, you know, I think I think maybe you're going with what's end meetings at a certain time, possibly, are you?
Well, well, I'm kind of going to the fact like, yeah, once we get to ten thirty and and we either have a big item ahead of us or we know that we're coming to an end of a big item. I think at ten thirty, we should start referring other items to the next council meeting. Like, I don't think it's fair for us to have to push through, push through, because we know pushing through does not make us make good decisions. So, um, you know, I think definitely, I think if we had a concrete stop time or average time of when council meetings should start, because I mean, for me personally, I don't think no council meeting should go after twelve o'clock. Because after nothing good happens after twelve o'clock for me. So.
It it is. Yeah, it's my understanding that at some point the council actually did have a a time, a time limit or time, you know, let's have things stop and it required two thirds of the council, I believe, to continue past, I think it might have been midnight. And and there was never a time where the council did not vote to continue. Um, I there there is, there is, there are ramifications. And so I think the other concern um is what are the ramifications to referring things? I think a lot of times we probably don't have enough exposure to what it means to delay something. There are some things that absolutely can be delayed, and there are other things that have, um, you know, pretty, pretty catastrophic um uh effects delaying it two weeks, whether that misses, you know, a a bid period for the year or stuff like that. And so I think, you know, that really does come down to to good agenda management, make sure that, you know, Alders understand, okay, if we put this off, what what does that mean? Um, there, you know, um, and I I don't think we get enough, uh, I don't think we have enough discussion about that. I actually, it was my goal at some point to be using C C E C, um, especially with it being before the agenda came out um to 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 allow for some discussion of that, um, all of us knowing, like, so, for example, say we had, you know, three or four, you know, really big things for Tuesday's meeting. Um, I likely would have came to this meeting and said, hey, you know, any thoughts from this group on if we delayed this or delayed that, rather than it just be um president slash vice president preference on delaying stuff? But um I think the the long and short of it is, you know, the council did try something in the past. And then also what are the ramifications of referring things? Because we don't, we meet every two weeks and sometimes like in August, we're going to meet once. And so delaying things for four weeks um definitely has a domino effect. Um, Karen, uh, while I was uh talking, did you have the ability to pull up what what you have?
Just to, so thank you to the one of our interns, Daisy, for compiling information. Just a quick gloss of this, um, twenty nineteen, so pre pandemic. Uh, the average meeting length was two hours and thirty two minutes. In twenty twenty one, in other words, all all virtual, four hours, forty one minutes. So far in twenty twenty two, the average is um four hours and fifty two minutes.
So, yeah, uh, can we go back to pre pre covid, please?
Well, we're going back into person. We'll see what happens.
Right. Um, no, but just a couple of things. So I think we need to take care of big items first and foremost. Get them out the way, because like you said, we don't know the ramifications of, you know, putting them off, putting them off where we know, say, smaller projects may be okay. Um, but I definitely think we should have the big items right out the bat, right out the gate. Let's Let's get them done and over with and then we can concentrate on some of the smaller things. Definitely like having an end time no later than twelve o'clock. I don't think we should be working the next day, you know, that just doesn't make sense. Um, I think this is, oh, this is kind of off of what Alder Paulson said. I do not think that we should be voting again if we should let the person finish their statement because that's just going to take more time. Like, like, just let him speak and let him be done with it because it was five minutes before. And then we cut it back to three, so folks are still kind of up in open arms about that. So I don't think we need to put any more pressure on us to have more votes of whether we're going to let this person finish their words. So, um, but I do agree with Alder Figaro Cole that. And I'm wondering who keeps track of our our talking time? Um, i- is that really being kept track of? But I agree that the time should be cut down for us, maybe seven minutes, you know, seven minutes max. And I think we should still have two times to speak because, you know, I don't always think of the things that I want to say or I hear from somebody else and I'm like, oh, yeah. You know, I want to ask another question. So I definitely agree that we should have two times, but the time period should cut down. So those are my suggestions. And, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Abbas.
Yeah, thank you so much. Uh, interesting discussion. I agree with the Alder Foster suggestion, starting something at five thirty. I think so. Meetings starting five thirty make a lot of sense, especially for people who have jobs, daycare and stuff like that. They can be able to attend for honoring resolution and and it should not have a quorum. It makes a lot of sense to ramp up those things by six thirty and then start common council meeting. I think so that will be a good step in the right direction. Second thing is I will also say we should, while we're having this discussion about, you know, uh, how many questions, how long we will speak. I think so we should all put a lot of effort as a as a body to create a culture of understanding. So alders understand this is what as a body we want to do. So nobody feel like they're being called out during the meeting by the chair or by a fellow orders. And then that sometimes create, you know, strange feelings. If we can able to also focus on creating that culture of conversation, communication and understanding people need would be really good while we are having those discussion around timing. Coming back to Alder Conklin, I think so I agree, like, five minute each time you have total ten minutes, I think so, uh, you know, uh, some people need some time to articulate their thoughts, but I do think so. For the last three, four years, I noticed five minute is good enough time to articulate your thought and 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 advocate for your constituent and and also present your case to fellow orders. Ten minutes is, I feel like it's too, it's too much a- as just the data shows that meetings are really long. But it's also long because of public comments and accessibility of the meeting as virtual as compared to in person. I will be also in a favor of uh moving the time into one, one opportunity of five minute or having might be two opportunities of three minute each. Either you take all of your six minute in a one shot or you can speak twice, three minute each and the the chair or the clerk of his can have some time on hand and give a gentle reminder to an order. So, yeah, so these are the uh, and also I'm very curious to see how the hybrid structure would go while we're having those discussion. Once we go into the hybrid setting, that will be interesting data to see, as Karen mentioned, in person versus virtual. How long the meeting goes, perhaps. We should also, before we finalize any policy, perhaps we should give us a couple of test run of hybrid and and see how that goes as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Foster.
Thanks, it's a real good discussion. I would say generally, um, similar to a comment I think I made about the uh harassment policy, I'm generally not a huge fan of like creating more rules to get the outcomes we want. And I think whether it's stricter enforcement of, you know, not letting alders ask public to finish their thoughts or trying to somehow like clamp down on alder limits, I I don't think either of those are really going to give us substantive results. I do, on the other hand, think that aside from um managing our honoring resolutions differently and earlier, which it sounds like there's some support for. In my mind, the the second biggest thing is going to be, um, I mean, pu- public comment is going to be what it is. And as long as we continue to have virtual access for folks, which I will continue to fight for, I think when we have hot topics, that's that's going to be it. It's going to be, you know, two hours of public comment. We just, there's no real good way around that, I don't think. But then I think the next biggest one is kind of alder behavior. I think it's a mistake to focus too much, though, on like how long is too long? Because honestly, frequency is, in my opinion, probably a bigger issue than length of any given statement. So if you've got folks that are chiming in on every single item, that want to say their opinion on every single item, that want to ask staff every single interesting question that comes to mind that they could ask later, that they could shoot an email for, that's not actually going to change their mind and how they're going to vote. That's where I feel like we're getting a lot of wasted time. And I think that is only going to get addressed through this kind of culture change saying that a few folks have mentioned. So I don't have like great answer for exactly how that looks like. But I do think it's the beginning of a conversation of how do we, how do we bring more visibility to what's actually happening? And I do really, I also asked IT about a timer. I think it's a great start. Let's all just for ourselves start to see how much space we're taking up. Not just at a given time, but over the course of an evening, honestly. Um, and then how do we start to just have that be a little bit more of a present conversation? So we're all acknowledging that we all have a hand in it. And if if we really want to tighten things up and and get out of here a little earlier, um, we all have to make some choices and we all have to not say things we want to say sometimes, particularly at the common council meeting. So more of just observation, um, but I think that's something we need to be working on.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Sure, and just to clarify, I I didn't actually expect that at any time uh an alder asks a question, uses their uh question opportunity to say, uh, please go ahead and finish that they would actually stop and take a vote. I guess I assume that the chair would say, um, uh, unless there's objection, uh, go ahead or something like that. So just a gentle prod to to remind folks that, you know, you are taking up, um, you are taking up space um from from the rest of the council to to do this. Because most of the time, you know, someone just need, you can tell someone just needs a thirty seconds extra to to get to the end of it. But sometimes it is a little bit like, well, we're we're debating through questions and 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 in my short time in the council, we've seen that a couple of times. So I won't belabor that point and I agree with Alder Foster that I I don't want to get too much into uh time limits uh in the debate. One thing I, you know, just kind of a different uh subject is uh potentially looking at putting maybe another council meeting on the schedule. Uh, so we have some flexibility. Maybe every other month, there's an extra one and I can see some head shakes that no one is interested in this one. So I won't belabor it, just just to give us flexibility, uh, if we do wind up with a bunch of referrals and we need to somehow manage the schedule so we have somewhere to to refer them to and I will stop there.
Thank you, Alder. Um, Attorney Ha- Haas, are you looking to participate in this discussion, which I absolutely am okay with? Or did you want to clarify something somebody said?
Yeah, I I just have a few points I I wanted to make, but I can wait until we all there's.
Yeah, you're going to wait in the queue then, so. Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate um comments that I'm hearing about culture shifts because I I do agree that was what I was going to say. But um, I think Alder Foster mentioned a lot of points that um I wanted to. One of the things, I guess, in terms of capacity, I kind of wanted to ask Alder Abbas if I'm on the right track with how I interpreted what he was saying about everyone kind of maybe learns or interprets information differently and so being approaching with humility and like knowing that folks may ask questions because there may be differences in learning or interpretation, right? But um also trying to compile space and normalcy for folks to be like, I'm drowning or I don't know what this is. This is a resource that would help me be more prepared. Or, you know, in the mentorship program, a piece like maybe there's embedded umbrella areas where mentors know, okay, I need to make sure to touch on these like fundamental pieces. Because culture shift is going to take longer, but also, um, yeah, I I'm I'm interested to hear Alder Abbas if if what you kind of meant about the calling out or um differences in in questions and interpretation, if you care to elaborate.
Alder Abbas, you can go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. Vice President Curry. What I was, what I was trying to say is with the as we, it's very visible, some of the differences on the council and and sometime when we create policies creating those before those policies, having those back end conversation either through council office, through chief of staff, educating orders on a key issues like just, you know, navigating system like, hey, this is something staff is working with A, B, Z order for this X period of time. This is nothing about particularly about you personally. But not saying, I mean, finding more how I say. I will, I will look more into our chief of staff and our council office for that particular support rather than coming through an order. Because when it comes to order, might be a person took it in in a, you know, in a different way, regardless that intent and the heart is in the right place. But previous experience or probably pre- previous trauma, whatever you call it, that might came in the middle of those scenarios. So using our office to really, I agree with you about mentorship, but also the role of our office and chief of staff about educating orders could be really, really powerful in those situation to create that culture. And when this culture is developing through a lens of neutral place, like let's say, not putting all the pressure on Karen, but let's say coming from Karen about the orders, we are trying really hard to keep four minutes. I'm just throwing an example here, each orders to speak and this and that. So it's not really putting stress on a council president and the chair on the seat. And if the chair is interrupting, you might be a person took it personally. Like, hey, maybe might be other people feel that's in order, but the person who felt insulted or something, you know, feelings come in the way. And every person is complex. So that culture and that conversation on various things could, it gonna take us time to develop those. And it's it's both side mutual understanding and and try to understand. I think so that's where I was, I was basically pushing it. Like if we as a body here, we're having a really great discussion. So let's say if we came across a conclusion, we're going only going to give four minutes to each order, a total eight minute of as fellow orders mention, it's more problem with frequency of asking questions or taking out of order of, uh, you know, consent agenda, taking an agenda out. We should, we need to understand these people might might need that time to understand and process. And if that's happening, how could council office, rather than an order, sending an email or council president, which I did during my time, that that sometime create more issues than solving problems? So finding somebody in the middle to help and and providing those resources is great. And and I think so that's where I was trying to identify it. And one last thing while I have a floor. I agree with Alder Conklin very much. After twelve, the brain just get shut down and and various amendments doesn't really play very well. And we had many meetings, we had after twelve, we make A, B, Z amendments and it just get really hard to focus, I think. So that's also something we should look to put a cap. And that gap also as a body push us to get things done before twelve. And I have seen during pre-nun session, uh, the mayor continuously remind us at the first two nights, we have one to twelve, let's get this done. And uh, and I have seen people restraining themselves. Again, I'm also not a big fan of putting hard laws on people and regulate more, but I do think so. Uh, from human being, hu- as a human being, it's really hard after certain time to process as both of us have young kids and they get up in morning six AM. And the meeting goes to three, so I I will echo you too. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, I just got one more thing to add on to that comment. I followed you, Alder Abbas, so thank you. On the note of culture, I think too, um, I understand because constituents have reached out to me after a council meeting about maybe a issue that they were very passionate about, that they didn't hear me speak on other than voting. And so I understand that being on the the public floor, this is an opportunity for alders to kind of share what their perspective is on policy or legislation in front of us. But kind of again, a reminder of we have other tools and methods. Alder Abbas alluded to the resources that we have, for instance, through our own office, you know, hopefully more when it's fully staffed. But um, that also being a reminder to ourselves about, um, just, I think, respect and diligence and knowing that we also have other tools to get messages out should we choose to make a stance or public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Uh, Alder Heck.
Thank you. I thought about lowering my hand in the interest of time since I don't have that much more to add that hasn't already been said. But I will say I agree strongly with Alder Foster in particular. And I think that most of the things we're talking about are around the edges and 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 aren't uh really going to, you know, have that much of an impact in the end, although the, I do like the idea of the as as many others have said of moving the honoring resolutions to another forum. But I do think, I think maybe uh Alder Figueroa Cole mentioned that we need to make sure we elevate those otherwise and, um, you know, sort of analogous to at the Oscars when they say at an earlier luncheon today, we honored so and so. And so I I think we need something like that as well as some other more substantial recognition. One, one thing we haven't talked about, but I I think it's probably related to the culture shift, that amorphous thing that I'm not sure exactly what it is. But, um, you know, we we I it might be related to timing, cumulative time you've spoken or something like that. But there is just a great lack of preparation at times and folks eat up a ton of time asking questions about things that they could ask staff about in advance or they could you know, get the answer otherwise not and not take up the time of not just alders, but staff and the public. And perhaps that amorphous culture shift thing could take care of some of that. I also think in all of these discussions about rearranging and moving things around, we need to keep in mind staff concerns also, their time and their devotion and how any of our decisions might affect them. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Attorney Haas.
Uh, thanks, President Furman. I just chatted down a few notes um to share about some of the things that were said. And this is, I mean, some of this is not legal advice. It's based on just my observations over just the last couple of years, but also really almost thirty years of attending uh city council meetings for different municipalities and meetings at the state level. So uh, I just wanted to share that. But first I wanted to say, based on what Alder Abbas said about midnight and brains shutting off, I think that means the council should not ask for any legal opinions after midnight. That should be one rule. So I I think Alder Paulson mentioned, you know, the the issue about quite asking questions of speakers. And there's the part about just asking them to elaborate. And then they're off to the races because there is no time limit at that point. They can go on for another fifteen minutes. But apart from that, what I've observed is, you know, there is a tendency for for alders to sometimes want to make their arguments through the public commenters and ask them leading questions. Just it it, you know, to to have the speaker say what the alder wants to say or just support the argument that they want to say. And, you know, and that's a practice, it it's tempting to do that, I understand. But you could, I think, you know, cut out some time by by trying to have some restraint in answering questions that are simply trying to make your point that you're going to argue. Um, on the, on the, the question about the the debate time limits, of course, that's in the ordinance now. It's two opportunities, ten minutes each. So, you know, if there's any consensus to change those rules, it could be done by somebody proposing a change to that ordinance. I think it is, um, you know, relatively rare that that alders, you know, ask to speak for a third time and usually the mayor likes to kind of, you know, point that out. I don't know if. I don't know if that is any deterrent effect, but beyond, you know, what I heard about the courtesy and keeping in mind that everybody is spending their time there. You know, in my experience, I think it's also just a matter of effectiveness. And I used to joke when I represented another municipality that there was, well, I shouldn't say municipality, uh, another state agency, that there are some members of the body that thought, you know, the more times they spoke, the more times they got to vote. Um, you know, and, and I think as, as much as we all like to realize that everything we have to say is going to be very persuasive, the reality is it probably is not if you're speaking the third time. Um, and, and so, uh, I know, I realize people, you know, we all forget a point we wanted to make or we wanted to respond to something that somebody else has said in the meantime. But, um, apart from, from, from just being, uh, you know, having respect for everybody's time, I think it's usually not especially effective to be, uh, speaking three times. Um, the final point I had was just on the motion to adjourn or, or the, the thought about referring things at, uh, remaining items at some point. You know, it's possible to do now just by making a motion to adjourn. And, and I think one point to keep in mind, while those motions are not debatable, it is allowable for members to just point out, hey, we have an important item remaining on the agenda. Um, it before, so that the body is alerted to that before voting on the motion to adjourn. And, you know, now with the consent agenda, we have, you know, really relatively few items. There's that are, that are truly discussed and there's pros and cons to moving up, you know, the, the more lengthy items. Because then you're making the people sit around and wait who are there for maybe a, a one minute, you know, discussion after that. So, um, you know, there's also some temptation to let's just get rid of the things that we think or be done with the things that we think will go quickly. Uh, and then there's the risk that those will turn out to be extended discussions as well. So those are just the notes I had, um, jotted down for whatever it's worth.
Attorney Haas, even though those were not a legal, uh, opinion, uh, definitely appreciate your feedback very much. So thank you. Um, any other, uh, thoughts on this? So I, 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 um, likely will be working with, um, I'm going to say, I'm gonna, as, as long as he's willing, I'm gonna work with Alder Foster to see if we come up with a proposal uh, for the honoring resolutions. I think there's, um, uh, uh, at least enough consensus to start moving forward with that idea. Um, if people have anything to clarify about that, uh, certainly send, send either of us a note and know that we will refer that here. Um, but I do think that's a, a pretty good first, first step, at least in my opinion. Uh, Vice President Curry.
Just a question or I thought, I'm gonna process, um, true on this myself, but, um, I believe Team City Awards or recognition was created during COVID. Um, so maybe something like that where it's like a celebration, you can invite community members. Um, it as a way to, to bolster and promote that. And, uh, just came to me as you were speaking.
No, I, I appreciate that. That's one of the things Alder Foster had mentioned is, is, is possibly the idea of not doing it at 5:30. Um, but doing it maybe the next, but it couldn't be necessarily the next morning. That might be awkward. Um, but, but doing it at, at a, a, a time where it could be, um, a little bit more stretched out if necessary. I don't know if people have more thoughts on that. Uh, Alder Abas, I see your hands up. Go ahead. Uh, you're muted. Go ahead.
Uh, you, you can finish your sentence. I have a, oh, one small suggestion or comment for you.
Oh yeah, no, I was just saying if people had suggestions on another time other than 5:30, um, you know, whether that's, you know, Wednesday morning or Monday morning or something like that, I'm certainly open, uh, to, to us talking about that.
I, I think so. The, the timing of 5:30 makes a lot of sense, especially if you're asking these people. Uh, it's, it's polite to ask them to join after their work hours. Um, and it makes a lot of sense. Uh, one thing about also I will say, uh, it's, it's, it seems like there's really great appetite for this 5:30 PM and honoring resolution. And as we're talking about, you know, developing that culture of collaboration, perhaps would be really good if you or Karen, one of you can send email to all Alders and let them know you and Alder Foster is gonna work on it and other people are, are welcome if they want to, you know, uh, add their input because some of us might don't want, don't, don't watch meeting or doesn't, you know, or have time constraint. So perhaps that's also create that welcoming environment to just invite people. And if anybody want to join you and Alder Foster, and I think so that you guys will be more than welcome to have them.
I appreciate that suggestion. I've definitely tried to be incredibly collaborative about stuff like that and certainly can do that with this item. Thank you. Uh, Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Uh, just to clarify though, on the honoring resolutions, we actually vote on the honoring resolutions, right? We, 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 we as a body put them before us and we adopt them and, and we say this is the, um, you know, we've, we've done this. And so is the thinking that we would do all the introductions and, and the, the pomp and ceremony at 5:30, but then the actual like, uh, stamp that this has been approved and adopted by the city of Madison acting to its common council happens at 6:30?
Yeah, I think my thought, my, at least, you know, and again, uh, I think we're gonna have to, uh, I don't know how much, you know, it's getting late and there's some other things. I think the thought would be, yes, absolutely. We have to vote on it at the council meeting. I think the thought would be that there would be no, no discussion, um, from, from the public or, or possibly even Alders of that item, um, at council. Um, and it would just be, it would be a vote. Um, so I don't know what our ability is to do the no discussion by Alders. Um, but you know, the idea is, you know, if Alders want to comment on it, they should be coming to that 5:30 session. Haven't really gotten into that too much, but that was sort of the thought that was in my head was, yeah, you know, it's, it's just a straight, it's on the consent agenda. Um, I, I think, you know, the thing that we really need to think about are situations when somebody tries to do an honoring resolution to honor, um, you know, something, something crazy that Alders don't want. Um, how do we, how do we handle for that? Um, I, I, I don't know how often that happens. Um, but you know, worst case scenario, somebody, you know, says, uh, let's have, you know, wider roads and no sidewalks and, uh, you know, some, some crazy like honoring resolution related to that. Um, it's the dumbest thing I can think of. Um, but, uh, you know, how, how do we handle for that? So, um, you know, we'll, we'll certainly talk to Attorney Haas, uh, about that, um, and see if we could craft something. And, um, absolutely we'll send out something to let people know that, uh, they'll be, uh, that if they want to collaborate on this, they certainly can. And, uh, this will come back to CCEC, um, for more discussion. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, um, that all sounds right on that. I just wanted to, uh, before we close this out, um, add my voice to those that are concerned with the lateness of the meetings. And I don't, again, I don't think like setting a hard limit is gonna fix anything, but perhaps, um, President Furman, you could talk with the mayor, um, and just see, I mean, I think it's within her power right now just to um, kind of remind us more often about it or, you know, once we've gotten through staff, you and hey, we've got this many agenda items before us. We, you know, it's, it's this time, maybe even just doing that as we take each item up. But, uh, so maybe if you could start a conversation, um, with the mayor, there might be some things we could do just with her, um, facilitation, um, to help, to help remind us about the overall, the, um, time and see if we can make a little headway, um, just through her efforts there.
Appreciate that. I think one of the things we're gonna, obviously we're, we're, we're approaching is what is the new normal when we go to hybrid too? And see how much that, that affects time and et cetera. But I will definitely, we will definitely talk to her about, um, different ways we can remind people. Okay. Appreciate that discussion. That will not be the last time we have that. I'm sure, as I said, we should continue to iterate on this. And, uh, it looks like we'll, we'll have some sort of legislation that will come through CCEC that we can talk about more about, uh, moving the honoring resolutions, which seem to be pretty popular idea. Um, so the next item on our agenda, seven, two, one, one, zero. Um, we just had a council, we just had a common council, uh, executive committee meeting last week. Um, we're gonna have another one again next week. So they're really happening fast. I do think long term, my goal is not to ha, to have, have Karen do what I'm about to have Karen do, which is read to us what she just sent us. Um, but I think, you know, long term, I think the idea with that, we would get that a little bit sooner, but there's just so much going on. Um, and, you know, we would use this as an opportunity to ask questions, but I do, having, you know, peeked at it, do think that Karen could go through that pretty quickly. And there's some useful things there. Um, and if people have questions they can ask. So, um, Karen, do you want to spend a few minutes talking about the update you just sent us?
Absolutely. Uh, yeah. So, um, a few things going on, wanted to give you updates about. Obviously we're, we're working really hard on prepping for the hybrid council meetings, logistics, overflow room staffing, registration, coordinating with the clerk's office. Even questions of security and so on and so forth. And we'll have some more information, uh, for you as you come back. And we're, you know, um, looking forward to, I'm looking forward to seeing, seeing everyone. And, um, if you have questions about parking or anything like that, just let us know. In terms of staff updates, uh, so you know, David, same as last week, Debbie's still working on neighborhood meetings. Assist, she, you know, she spends a good amount of time also assisting constituents who call in. Um, she's also now, of course, she's working on the council meeting, meeting materials. And so with back, another reminder with back-to-back meetings, um, please allow a little bit extra time for her to get back to you on your additional requests. We have our aspire, um, interns with us for about two more weeks. Um, they'll be getting some training with the city attorney's office on Roberts rules. And they're going to be helping us out, um, on, in staffing on the, the 12th and the 19th while we have them. They, they were both very excited about experiencing in-person, uh, council meetings in the chambers. They're also, they've been a participant, they've been watching CCEC as well. So that's nice. Um, I'm working, you know, I'm working on the budget submission and I'm gonna have something for you for the next meeting to discuss because that's due on the 21st. Okay. Um, we're getting really close to being able to make an offer for the legislative admin assistant position. Um, working on updating the onboarding plan so that once that happens, we can get things rolling. Um, legislative analyst position closes on the 18th. Please share that information with your networks. I really appreciate any sharing you can do. And I expect that the community engagement specialist position should be on the, the finance committee agenda on the 11th for your review. Okay. Oh yeah. So it occurred to me, one of the things this new position, the, I mean, one of the things the replacement for Madeline would be doing right now is starting to work on a 2023 council meeting schedule. So that's gonna go into the, into the to-do list. Um, and we will get something to you. We work with the clerks and finance and cross-reference holidays and budget days and et cetera, et cetera days to get something to you. Um, I think part of what I would like to do, now that I'm in this role, I really would like to avoid any back-to-back council meetings. That's just me. I don't know how you all feel about it. Um, in this, you know, if we can, if we can, you know. Um, and I'll get back to you with, with, with a draft and y'all can, you know, take a look at that. So the, uh, I don't know if you remember from last year, the, uh, annual surveillance technology reports. I've been working on getting those, uh, from agencies. Um, we compile them, I write a, a brief resolution, it comes to, to you. Um, and we have about 11 agencies having responded, working on getting the rest. So wanted to put that on your radar. And then a couple of police civilian oversight board, um, updates. Um, we've got interviews for an hourly administrative aide coming up next week. So I expect to be able to, um, make an offer on that position ASAP. Um, and the process for replacing board members, there are five board members whose terms are, are expiring at the end of September. Attorney Haas sent you a communication about part of that, um, process that, um, about the community list, community organization list. I know some of you have been in, in contact with him about that. But just wanted to put that on your radar as well. So let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Karen, for that update. Any, any questions? Alder Foster, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, uh, Karen. One, uh, comment on the schedule is to, um, pay particular attention to the kind of April, May timeframe. Um, and there's this, maybe should be a future agenda, um, item as well, but, um, trying to make some improvements in reducing the transition period, um, of CCECs. It's like, sometimes it's like a month and a half where there's no functioning CCC. So just if you could keep that in mind when you're starting to work through that, I know that's, there's other challenges with election days and et cetera, et cetera, but trying to have, um, have another council meeting soon after the organizational meeting to be able to appoint, um, CCEC members and, and let that group continue to work. Um, so just keep that in mind if you could.
Excellent point. Thank you, Alder Foster. Any other questions? Okay. Um, our next, uh, agenda item is, um, our future agenda items. Um, I'm gonna pull up, uh, the latest version of the spreadsheet, which I need to do a better job of sharing with people. So I apologize for that. Um, but, um, we, we do have a very weird, um, schedule this month due to our council meetings where we are meeting a lot to support our council meetings, uh, with CCEC. Um, so we obviously are meeting again next week ever after, after having just met last week. Um, I'm gonna share my screen. I just wanna very quickly see if anybody has anything that they definitely want to see at our next meeting. Um, we can, uh, try to spend a little bit more time in the near future on some of those future meetings. Um, but so far the thought for our next meeting, um, would be the council office budget. Um, I think, I think it's a good opportunity, um, to check in on hybrid. We'll have done a hybrid meeting on Tuesday. If there's any changes that we're thinking or anything that really needs to, um, you know, be thought about for the following, it would be a good venue for us to talk about that. Um, I have some, uh, small thoughts that I'd like to share with the group on going forward on Alder onboarding and ongoing training. Um, we talked about that. I, I think, um, we're overdue for a TFOX implementation work group update. Um, and so I'm hoping to prepare just a summary on what that committee, where that committee was left off, um, that a spreadsheet. Um, and, and we, I want to talk as a group, what are, what we believe the future of that should look like, um, and some suggestions related to that. Um, then, then there are two topics that are related to the implementation work group, which is the referendum and BCC structure. The thought is that we probably possibly have some discussions on that, um, at that meeting. And, uh, the mayor is available that night, um, and try to figure out whether or not we, uh, get an update from her that night or we'll get that up before our council meeting, taking advantage of the currently defined informational update. Um, that is eight items. If we include, uh, an update from the mayor, I can't, we're not gonna have eight items on the agenda. I mean, uh, uh, you know, we're still trying to figure out the right number tonight. Um, we had some presentations, but we only had four items and we spent a little over two hours. Certainly don't want to be going much over two hours. Um, is there anything that people are thinking either for our next meeting or the meeting after that, um, that they'd like to at least be on the radar while I'm putting together these agendas? Uh, Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Um, thank you so much, President Furman. Um, my real question is, is why are we having CCEC on August 11th? When we don't have another meeting until September and we have one August 31st, right before our next council meeting. So I have this one in August and we don't have any other council meetings.
Sure. So if you see the spreadsheet, there, it actually isn't even defined for a common council meeting. I think it's, the idea is there's a lot of things going on. Um, if, if the body as a whole would prefer not to have that second, uh, August meeting and just meet on, uh, I mean, there'd end up being a month in between our CCECs. So we'd meet on the end of July and then not meet again, uh, for over a month. Um, we can certainly talk about canceling that. Um, there, there is no shortage of things that this group, um, uh, should be talking about and can talk about. Um, I, I prefer not getting rid of that and not having such a large gap between our meetings. Um, but I'm certainly open to that if that's what, if people are, are overwhelmed with the amount of times we're talking.
Well, I, like you said, you know, it's just so much back-to-back, having these back-to-back meetings in July. And then we have one in August and we're off the rest of the August, you know, and I think for me personally, like that's the time I'm trying to take my family vacations and schedule everything around after the last meeting in August. And that just CCEC on the 11th is just kind of sticking out like a sore thumb. So, um, you know, that's just my suggestion. You know, I understand it is a month time, but we're not really doing any council stuff in that time. Of course, there's always, of course, there's always stuff to talk about. I'm not taking that away at all, but, um, just for lining up with council meetings and things like that, having that month off in August just to really be with our families and take vacations and re, re, re-energize. Um, that's just kind of where I'm at with that. Um, but as far as for the meetings, um, you know, I think it's definitely important that we hear from the mayor. And I, I really wanna see where the Alder onboarding and ongoing training is going. So if I could just suggest one thing, maybe the BCC structure be moved to a following meeting would be my suggestion because I think all the rest of this stuff is pretty important. Not saying that that's not, but that's just more so, um, I feel like might be able to be pushed to the side for a moment. So that's my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alder Figueroa Cole. Thank you. Alder, figure a call.
Thank you. Could you please clarify, was the date that we were expecting from the mayor?
So one thing CCEC did a few years ago, the mayor would come in and talk about some of the conferences she has gone, she had gone to some updates on different initiatives. It was, I don't remember how often it was. It wasn't, it certainly wasn't every meeting, but it was helpful. And so it was something that, you know, we've talked about continuing. Alder Foster correctly pointed out that there is a, a probably a prime opportunity to do that before a council meeting opposed to taking up CCEC time. But, you know, I can, I could send out some examples of what she's talked about in the past. But it, but I found it helpful to know about some of the, you know, the different conferences and some of the different initiatives that we weren't getting updates from in, in other ways.
Also, going to move the, I mean, if everyone is in agreement to move the BCC structure, then I would say just take those three items combined because I think that they're, they're all kind of together, the default referendum on BCC structure, they should move together if we are moving one of those.
Okay, appreciate that.
That's my, my suggestion there.
Thank you. Alder Abass.
Yeah, this come to, yeah, interesting suggestion about having the mayor come before the council meeting and discuss that if we are changing that structure. Might be that location or might be appropriate or CCEC. I know we changed CCC ordinance where we don't get, you know, we discuss about more operating issues. Not citywide issue, but I do think it's an extremely important issue on man's shelter and the budget-related stuff gonna come in front of us on Barret Island Drive. As it's in my outer main district, so I am really up to date on that, but I'm not sure as a council, everybody is aware where we are on that project. And the project will probably gonna cost city twenty-one million dollar now. So I think so it's extremely important and timely to bring an update either through CCEC when the mayor is gonna come or before the council meeting. So it's remain very public, transparent and also twenty of us, majority of us can get an update as it's a really high-profile, you know, stuff need to be discussed. Just my two cents up to you guys to decide how you want to proceed.
If you'd like, yeah. Yeah, certainly appreciate that suggestion. I will say the informational thing exists now, so that's certainly a possibility. It, it just comes down to figuring out, you know, is this the appropriate venue or is it, is it there? What that looks long-term. And then where I, I agree that, you know, having an update, you know, I, I, I feel like we may have spoken about this a little bit somewhere other than just, you know, the, the news reports, but I'll certainly check with the mayor's office and see if we could figure out how quickly we, that, that, that could be done and where they're most appropriate places for, for most Alders to see that. So thank you for this suggestion.
Thank you.
Alder, figure a call. Go ahead.
We do have our discussions on that topic on the CCH. Oh my God, I can. City County Homeless Issues Committee, CCHIC. So perhaps we should, I, I mean, I can ask to be added on the agenda from a perspective of more financial in-depth discussion, if that's what, what Alder Abass is asking.
Alder, figure a call. I, yeah, Alder, figure a call. I think that's a fantastic suggestion. I think the, the ability also to, to send out the video of, you know, so there could be a newer update there and then to send out a video to Alders, well, one, a notification Alders that it's gonna be discussed in more detail there than it has in, you know, either in the past or just, you know, a bigger update. And then also letting Alders that know that if they miss that, that you can see it. I think that's, I think that's, that's probably a pretty appropriate place for it.
I mean, it's not usually about financials, so if that's what you, but what we're looking for, I can definitely then ask for Dave or someone to be there and uncover that part. But we do talk about these things on that committee regularly.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the reminder of that. I mean, I think that's been my goal is not to necessarily have duplicate stuff at CCEC or even at that informational meeting when it can be at a committee that, that's related to that topic and Alders can be, you know, explicitly invited to that meeting as well as see the recording and reach out to staff with questions. So I, I'll work with you and, and the mayor's office on trying to figure out, you know, and also see if Alder Abass offline wants to give a little more clarity on, on also, I think it is the financial aspect. But, but that all, all a good reminder and, and good thoughts about how we just better use our time. So appreciate that. Anything else, thoughts on this agenda? Not seeing any. I do ask that Alders, if, if, if the eight eleven meeting is an issue for quorum, we're not gonna have a quorum. If you can go ahead and send me a note, I'd appreciate that. Also send out an email and just ask people that if we're not, if we don't think we'd have quorum for the eleventh. We'll go ahead and cancel that. But I appreciate everybody's time this evening and I would entertain a motion.
Move a German.
Can I get a second? All right. As I see otherwise, I'll consider unanimous consent. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Night.